So then we'll call the meeting to order. Stand to the flag, stand.
I am a vengeful allegiance to the life of my state of community. And to the quality for which it stands in our nation under all communities of the benefits of its problem.
No action was taken during close session. Next time we're going to go to the recognition, we'll start with the 2024 governing board member candidates.
Okay, it's not officially yet. We do not have the official notice from Sacramento County, but we had two areas open for trustees. That was area three and area four. Area three Casey Reboy ran unopposed and area four Matthew Ward also ran unopposed. And so basically, since they were unopposed, again, we don't have the official notification from the county. But it looks like they will take seats in December. Yes, is Matthew here? There's Matthew. So we would. So December would be the first board meeting that Matthew can come on.
And next is item D, board meeting protocol.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more recognition.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
We have the Galt Character Coalition.
We're here this evening. These are members of the Galt Community of Character Coalition. Most of you are familiar with this organization. They started in 2007. Dr. Karen Chow is one of their founding members. We've given over 200 character awards for just raising up people who have really proven to be examples in our community of who we should be and how we should conduct our lives and what our community should be like. And so today we are going to, we're here at this school board meeting to give an award to somebody who's very worthy of that. Awards are given to all kinds of people, all ages, all different kinds of occupations. But today we're going to be recognizing a teacher. So I'm going to go ahead and read the nomination form to you. Susan Hughes is a true model of respect for our Galt community and a winner of the Galt Community of Character Coalition Respect Award for 2024. She received an enthusiastic enthusiastic and unique nomination from the Cow Waste Recycle Education Team and 22 second graders and already. Here are their observations that were the basis for the nomination. As visitors in Mrs. Hughes' second grade class, we have witnessed an amazing example of walking the talk when it comes to respect for others. Every direction, every question, every correction, Mrs. Hughes communicates to her students is always delivered with respect. Showing respect sets a tone for how we treat each other and in Mrs. Hughes' case, sets the tone of the classroom. We have learned a great deal from Mrs. Hughes' classroom leadership style that we now put into practice in our own work, helping grow and educate the next generation of environmental citizens. However, it is the students that best share how Mrs. Hughes embodies the value of respect. Our teacher, Mrs. Hughes, shows us with her actions how to treat people with kindness, courtesy, and dignity, no matter what age you might be. Mrs. Hughes acknowledges our value and worth by listening to us, asking our thoughts and opinions, and helping us make good decisions. We never feel judged or discriminated against, even when we may be wrong, make unwise choices, or act in a manner that is appears uncaring. Our teacher shows us by her actions that respect is not only something that we give to others like she gives to us, but also something that we deserve from others. The truth is, Mrs. Hughes helps make us better people. Mrs. Hughes, the many years you have been a teacher has made a significant difference to innumerable, innumerable young lives and adults. Please accept these 22 cards from your second grade teacher, between paraphrase and quote unquote. And these, as a reminder of the respect you have instilled in your students. Mrs. Hughes, you are a true asset to the Galt community and the recipient of the Galt Community of Character Coalition Award for respect. Thank you very much. There was a lot of work that went on behind the scenes. There's also a lot of people. These are from your students, which is such a gift. And this is from the.
I just want to say thank you. I love being part of the Galt community. And Galt really has created this this element of respect throughout their schools as we focus on student strengths and their talents. And I've been teaching for 30 years now. And I can't tell you what I learn from my students is they share their strengths and talents with me each and every day. And those students that I've had in the past and the students that I have now really are an important part of my life. They're truly in my heart forever. And it's a blessing that I'm grateful for. So thank you to the Galt community for letting me be a part of this. I truly love it here and I'm happy to spend my career teaching here. So thank you.
So we have copies, students. We do pictures though, so your students can see. Could we possibly use your phone too? Maybe, maybe, maybe. It's you and me, baby. Thank you for allowing us to get this award. Thank you for coming.
Moving on to board meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, our session is being recorded. It's open to the public and being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. Our public comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time of public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a public comment in person, the public comment forms are, I believe, over here, by the little podium we have tonight. Those who go to Ms. Bock, our board meeting assistant, email public comments or email to the superintendent at least 24 hours before the board meeting. And they're posted to the website with our agenda. We have two comments that we received that are posted with this agenda. And each motion will be followed by a roll call vote for action items. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by telephone or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. We do have President Skinner and Trustee Reboy out tonight. They're not with us online. It's tonight's Liberty Ranch's home house or back to school night. And board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM.
Thank you for that. Going on to item F. Public comments for topics not on the agenda. We do have a few. First one, we'll start off with Gailing.
Okay, hi. My name is Gailing Gomez. I am the president of Galt Elementary Faculty Association. I am here tonight to remind you that teachers in Galt Joint Union Elementary School District work every single day to engage and support every child in their classroom, regardless of their child's race, religion, ability, gender orientation. Because our job is to educate students and successfully prepare them for their futures. GEFA stands firmly in support of teachers being inclusive and supportive and of all students, and we are disappointed by the negativity and divisive language we have seen being used online toward one of our fabulous teachers. As teachers, we support our students, so we expect this board to support our teachers.
Next is Matthew Ward.
I am here tonight to address a troubling issue at McCaffrey Middle School. Recently, a survey was distributed to students asking them to select their pronouns and options, including he, him, she, her, and they, them. This act is unacceptable. Introducing such gender identifying pronouns to young students is not only inappropriate but potentially damaging. This kind of survey imposes complex adult concepts on children who should be focused on their core education, not on navigating controversial gender ideologies. This intrusion into their academic environment is deeply concerning. I ask for clear and immediate answers to the following questions. Number one, definitions and context. What do they and then mean in the context of this survey? Provide a detailed explanation of how these terms are being defined and used in a classroom setting. If the goal is to educate, then the definitions must be clear, precise, and understandable to a 12-year-old's brain. It's critical that we avoid confusing young students with vague or ambiguous terminology. Number two, biological criteria. What biological criteria define a they/them person? Traditional gender classifications are based on chromosomal structures. What is the scientific basis for a they/them classification? If there are no clear biological markers, then this classification lacks scientific validity and should not be presented as fact in our schools. Do they/them entities exist in other life forms? Are there they/them cats or are those kangaroos? You must ensure that any information presented is based on credible scientifically supported evidence. Number three, self-identification process. How are court bureaus supposed to determine if they are a they/them person? Is self-identification alone sufficient or is a medical or psychological assessment required? This process needs to be transparent, based on clear guidelines, and not left to individual interpretation or speculation. If you cannot provide clear, logical answers to these questions, it suggests that the school is more interested in promoting an ideological agenda than in addressing the real educational needs of our children. This is a disservice to students and parents alike when schools become platforms to controversial and unrooted theories. On a more personal note, I was a dedicated volunteer at Lake Canyon last year. I volunteered Monday through Friday teaching math to kids at no cost at district. This year, we have withdrawn our older two boys from the public school system and the youngest will be removed next year. From the installation of tampon dispensers and voice bathrooms to the sexualization the sexualization of children through inappropriate materials, and now this intrusive survey is issued that forced us to reconsider our involvement in the public education system. It is increasingly clear that the focus of our school should be on providing a rigorous academic education rather than engaging in social experimentation. I strongly urge the board to refocus on what truly matters, providing a solid unbiased academic foundation for our children. Stop pushing divisive ideologies that confuse and mislead young minds. Education should be about learning essential subjects and fostering critical thinking, not about introducing controversial and confusing sexual concepts. I invite those who follow the public comments night to address any of the questions I have raised with clarity and substance rather than obscuring the issue with flowery rhetoric. And on a side note, from what I understand on Facebook feed, the purpose of that was to get to get to know the kids on a personal level. At least that's what I read on Facebook. And one might interpret that as potential conditioning and grooming, and I think the motives of the survey need be examined. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kim Lozama.
Good evening. I am Kim Lozama, one of the now two sixth grade teachers at Valley Oaks. In the three previous years that I've been in sixth grade, our sixth grade students' SBAQ scores in both ELA and math have been some of the highest in the district. And our students' growth from fifth grade to sixth grade has been dramatic. Some of what has contributed to that success has been lower class sizes to help accommodate the needs of some of the neediest students in the district. We are told that these classes are within the state average, but I would hope that we are shooting for better than average. I'd like to thank Wes Cagle for coming to visit in our classrooms this last week to see the issue for himself. I'm sure he will share with you his impressions, but I want to be very clear that the problem is not solely that the classrooms are overcrowded, which makes it very difficult to get around to help the students. The additional problem is that adding seven to eight students to our last year's class size adds seven to eight more multiple-page math tests that we need to hand grade, seven to eight more multiple paragraph essays that we have to grade, and seven to eight more in-depth projects to grade. In order to get through that much correcting at sixth grade level work, we will be forced to water down our expectations. We will not be able to require the same amount of writing or math assessments or projects as we are able to with smaller class size. There's an absolute cost to the education of our students that goes along with this decision. I am sure you will see it in next year's test scores. In regards to the offer of an instructional assistant to offset the overcrowding of our classrooms, first of all, sixth grade curriculum, especially the math, is beyond what most of the IAs are capable of helping with. They are able to offer only limited assistance and sometimes even confuse the kids because they aren't strong in the concepts themselves. Also, we teach poor curriculum, ELA and math, in the morning when the students are most energetic and engaged. But our social studies and science are mainstreaming time or in the afternoon, which would not work for a four-hour position. We need the best qualified people to be working with our students. As well intentioned as they are, IAs are not the solution. For the end of last year, we were slated to have three sixth grades at Valley Oaks. That decision was then reversed based on the fact that five students would be leaving fifth grade. Each year that I have been in sixth grade, Valley Oaks has enrolled several brand-new sixth graders to our school. Last year, I had five new students in my sixth grade class who had not been there in fifth grade. Already this year, we've had at least three new sixth graders wanting to enroll at Valley Oaks. Two of them have been accepted despite the fact that we already had 32 students per classroom. The third had to be sent to an overflow school. These are just the ones that I'm aware of. I would almost guarantee that there are more that should be at VO that would be bringing our class sizes back up to the numbers that we had in the spring when three classes were approved. And would also allow us to be the overflow for the other full sixth grade classes in the district. I'm again urging you to do what is right for our students and reinstate the third teacher at Valley Oak Sixth Grade. It should have been done earlier, but the inconvenience that we would all go through now would be offset by the increase in our students' education.
Next is Kathy Loach.
Hi, it's been a minute. And I'm not even going to use all my time. I, I'm Kathy Loach. I'm a longtime community member and retired from Galt Elementary District three years ago after 28 years in the district. I taught sixth grade for the final 15 years of my career. And I'm, I'm speaking tonight because of comments I have seen online that really concern me. Our job as teachers is to support our students and give them a safe place to land. For a lot of our kids, school and teachers, we are their safe place. They, they feel respected. They feel included. They know that they can speak to their teachers when they maybe cannot speak to anyone at home. And I would encourage us as a district, and I still feel part of this district, to maintain that inclusiveness, not to punish, not to question, but to make sure that our students feel safe. And that goes to all the issues that I've been reading about online. The pronouns. You may think that middle schoolers are not ready to talk about that. They are. They know. Sixth graders, same thing. I have students as young as fourth grade. Talk to me about pronouns. They have older siblings. They have cousins. They know. And so if that's the main objection, you guys, you've got your head in the sand. Our kids know about it. Our kids talk about it. And so please, please support our kids with whatever they need. And that includes the teachers that are in the classroom to help them become well-rounded and well-accepted and full of confidence kids that we know they can be. Thank you.
Yes. Any more public comment?
No, there are no more.
Moving on. Thanks everybody who came and spoke.
One question. I know we're not allowed to discuss and everything, but I had some questions regarding the topics on the public comment that I wanted to. I wanted to be entered in the record that I did have questions. Can I submit those to you or?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I wanted to thank everybody, but I do think there's some positions that are clearly underrepresented in this environment. And so I just want to ask some questions. I had a lot of questions about the survey and also the article that was shared. I want to answer those questions. And so I don't know if that's something I can do to you, if it's during my time. How does that work?
Well, if you want, if the purpose is that you want it in the minutes, you should probably go ahead and speak to it now. So then that way it goes in the minutes. If that's what you would like.
Okay, so, and this is, this is just one more member. I want to emphasize that. So I want to thank everybody for coming. And I, these are sensitive topics and they're significant policy issues. And I think that whether we're talking about gender, whether we're talking about sexuality, those things are clearly policy items that we as a board, I think, need to speak to before it goes out. And so my questions with regards to the article was shared was at what age, my understanding is we have not yet even introduced sexuality or homosexuality at an age that this article was provided. So at what point have we decided that we are okay? Is a kindergarten okay? Is a first grader okay? And then where is that line? How deep do we go? Do we talk about, you know, homosexuality, but then do we not? Do we also talk about what that means, what that, those actions are? Like, where is that line? We haven't had a chance as a board or a district to talk about that. Can parents opt out? I mean, they can opt out for sex education. Can we not also opt out for this? And my thing is, is what if that student had come back the next day and said, you know, didn't talk to their parents and said, what is a lesbian? What would the teacher have said to a fifth grader who has not yet been introduced to sexual concept in the district? So that was what was really, and I think clearly enrollment decisions are being made based on a lot of these topics that are happening in the public schools. And I don't think it's a position that is being presented because people get sort of bullied into saying things and not saying things. And so that's, those are my questions. So I'm happy to, to, to share them with regards to the pronouns. I do think that it's also a sensitive issue. It's a policy issue. And then from a practical perspective, what is the teacher going to do with that information when they get it? Are they going to now put themselves at risk and be required to call these, you know, individuals by their preferred pronouns when we haven't even as a district decided that that's what we want in our schools? And maybe we do and maybe we don't, but I would like the opportunity to have that discussion. And, you know, I do think that someday we're going to look back and we're going to say, hey, remember when we did that whole thing with pronouns? It's like the pet rock. Like, we're going to look back and say, a lot of people said this was a good idea and perhaps didn't really think it all the way through. And so I guess my question is, is when do we get the chance to talk with regards to the policy issue? And just because, I mean, we tell our, our kids growing up, just because everyone else is doing it. If everyone jumps off a bridge, are you going to jump off a bridge too? So I think that we need to have the opportunity to have those decisions because I do think that even from a practical perspective, it puts a district at risk if someone is asking pronouns. And then now has asked, put themselves in a position where they're going to be required. What if the parents don't know? I mean, then there's apple issues. So it is a tremendous, it is a huge policy issue, both of these issues, I think. And so I think that those, I think the fact that reason people got it shut on Facebook was because this policy issue was out there made us look like us as a board had decided that this was okay. And my personal opinion, it's not okay. So, and I would like the opportunity to share that in a, if we're going to be doing these types of things. So that's all I wanted to say. So I'm welcome to follow that up with something in writing if that makes it easier for the record. Because I did, you know, have a few questions.
And I, I mean, I don't know. It's reported, so it's, it's pretty easy to get the notes when it's reported. It does help with note taking. So the, I'll follow up with you. Okay, we'll get to the notes if we have questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Moving on. We will go to reports. Goal number one.
Thank you. I can probably start. Our first report is about the new school year. Pretty smooth start. I want to thank our staff. We did a great job getting to, getting kids back into school. Did a lot of work on relationship building and culture and what that means to start a school year. We had a great presenter. It was on August 6th. We had a district-wide staff development day. I want to thank our food nutrition team. They've got our, our teachers and our staff over at McCaffrey and we had a three-hour-long, what about two and a half hour-long presentation on trauma-informed practices. And the feedback was positive. Teachers said, there, there was some positive feedback. Teachers said that they actually took away some items that they could actually implement the first day, first two days of school. Just some good refreshers on the reminder of the relationship piece, building that culture in your classroom, listening to students that were there for them, that type of, that type of thing. So most of the feedback we had was very positive for that. So I wanted to share. Enrollment, there's an update for you on what enrollment looks like right now. We have 12 students. We'll take it. Even plus one, we'll take it. So we ended in June, 3,447 students. We're now 3,459. TK has gone up. We have two, two extra classes of TK, but we did graduate a larger eighth grade class. And so we were thinking that we were going to be up more than 12, but again, it's going in the right direction. There is a breakdown for you for high school sites here. Alejandro and I have been going to the back to school nights. We only have one left tomorrow. So McCaffrey is the last one. We've been sharing some information with parents at the principal's message about Measure H, just giving information. There's a one-page fact sheet that we're handing out and we've been keeping the website updated. Facility master plan on there and just giving information about what it could cost, could cost taxpayers. You know, and again, the messages that is up to the voters in Galt. So that's our update so far to start the school year.
Do we know if the students from McCaffrey, did they split evenly between Galt and Liberty or was there one more than the other?
You know, I do not know that. I do know, at the CAS meeting, superintendent mentioned that Galt High enrollment is higher than Liberty. She did mention that, but I'm not sure how our kids split out. Yeah. Summer, we'll move on to summer programs. Thank you, Lois. Are we doing PowerPoints?
Great, thank you. We had a very busy summer, busy full summer. No. Okay. I'm not that tech savvy anyway, so it's perfectly okay. So we'll just go on to the next slide. Right, so our summer program, so as I mentioned, we had a pretty busy summer programs, summer, summer programs. We had our extended school year. This is our program for our students that are on an IEP. We had our summer school academic programs. We also have our migrant summer programs. And then in addition, We also have our migrant summer programs. And then in addition, we had our expanded learning summer program. Our academic programs started June 17th. They went all the way through July 12th with no school on the 19th and the 4th. And then our expanded learning programs ran from June 14th all the way through the 24th. Our academic programs were at Marango, Fairsite, McCaffrey, River Oaks, and then our GEL programs. And sorry, also Valley Oaks. Our GEL programs were at all sites with the exception of Lake Canyon and Career. I do want to recognize our coordinators that supported all of the summer staffing and student needs. Our ESY coordinator, Gina Fuentes, a summer school coordinator, Gerardo Martinez. Lori Jones, our expanded learning coordinator. In addition, we had our seven site coordinators. Twenty-nine teachers, fifty-two classified, a school nurse, and two speech therapists. So it was a full staffing this summer. So this slide kind of highlights attendance. And just, you know, briefly, for for our academic programs, we invited students that were based on their MAP scores. We were looking for students that fell between the 30th and the 50th percentile. And this was from kindergarten through seventh and eighth grade. And as you can see here, the attendance ranged kind of bit, bit on the lower end for our seventh and eighth graders with some, you know, in the seventies and sixties for, for the remaining grade levels. You know, it is harder during the summer. Summer, summer programs are mandatory for students and parents and families that schedule different summer vacations. So this is pretty typical and pretty similar to what we experienced last year. For our summer academies that were academic, we did have our teachers' complete pre and post data. They used district reading assessments. And what we have here is the percent of students that made growth at each grade level. So we saw some nice growth across the district in, in terms of reading accuracy and reading rate. Those were those two areas that they measured. So our migrant program, we received funding to operate a supplemental migrant services during the school year and then also during the summer programs. And so we have, we have had a preschool migrant program and a middle school migrant program. And so the migrant program for the middle school focused on culture and self-pride and mathematics as those key skills that they worked on. And this is just an example of a couple of students that worked, they worked on kind of researching the Mexico's independence and then contrasting it with the United States independence. And they, you know, had presentations for, for the teacher. Of course, since it was an Olympic summer, they did incorporate some writing around the Olympics. And these were the prompts that the teacher had the students create their graphics and their writing prompts on. And then for our expanded learning program, unfortunately Lori Jones was unable to attend this afternoon. So as I mentioned, it was served at five sites and we had seven site coordinators and fifteen instructional assistants supporting. And if we don't offer ELO at every school site, then we do transport to the sites that we do offer as the transportation was available. We had about 21 community members volunteer in the summer Gallup program. And during the course of this session, we had about 250 students participate. Some extracurricular field trip-type activities that they participated in. They participate, went to the Consumer Reserve Preserve. There was walking trips to the library, with some special projects. And then they had water days and then the students participated in Gallup as well. There's some students enjoying the summer. So it was a busy, fun summer. Questions about our summer programs? Moving on to our state assessments. Thank you. Slides for that as well, we do. So if we go to the next slide, why? Reflecting back, we just want to give you a quick point of reference. Of, we wanted to remind you of where the State Testing Administration has been in the past seven years. Twenty eighteen, it was a regular school year. Twenty nineteen, it was a regular school year. In 2020, the State Testing Administration was suspended. When we came back in 2021, it was flexed. And we opted to use MAP instead of Sback at that point because children had just returned to us. 2022, we were back on track, but not quite. You know, not quite how we knew the school year to be. So it wasn't until 2023 that we had our first regular school year. And of course, 2024, this past year, we would often consider that a regular school year. We highlight those two years so that when you're looking at cohort information, you can see that that's a good indication of how children are doing on state assessments. On the next slide, quickly, you know by now that Sback assesses English, Language Arts, and Math. The goal is to meet or exceed grade level standards. We could also say that the goal is for children to obtain a performance level of three or four. It is administered to all students in, in third through eighth grade. So as we look at the district summary, I want you to remember that these scores are still preliminary. So some of these percentages could change slightly until they become final and public sometime in October. So in the area of English Language Arts, 50% of our third graders were, met or exceeded the grade level standards. Forty-six percent of both, both, excuse me, fourth and fifth grade students met or exceeded the standards. In sixth grade, you can see 49% of the children scored at that level three and four. In sixth grade, I said 49%, in seventh grade, 61%, eighth grade, 49%. And when you look at all the students who took the Sback assessment for this past school year, 50% of the children are at or above grade level standards. So we're looking at the whole cohorts. Again, this is a group of children that moved from one grade level to the next, which is why you see that color coding there. So when looking at the cohorts, I would like you to take a look at the growth made from fourth to fifth, from fifth to sixth, and the strong 11% growth from sixth to seventh grade. On the next slide, the results for math are a little lower than we anticipated. However, I want you to take a look at third grade. They still showed almost 50% of the students meeting or exceeding grade level standards. We show fourth grade at 41%. Grades five, six, and seven are in the thirties with eighth grade not too far behind, a 27%. So when looking at, at the area of mathematics, 37% of all the students who took the Sback test met or exceeded the standard. And when looking at the cohorts, we would like you to take a look at the 7% growth from fifth to sixth grade. At this time, know that data reflections are being completed by both teachers and administrators. There are a set of questions that they have to respond to, and they include anything from the identification of trends, instructional implications, the alignment of local assessments to state assessments, the correlation to MAP, the correlation to attendance, curricular pacing, the testing conditions and timing. So the next six slides, we will have each site administrator talk to us, briefly talk to us about their data points and a possible next step. So we will start with Career.
Ms. Leah. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, I've been reading it and I can't because I'm blind. So I want to point out fifth grade to sixth grade, that is a highlight for me at Career. And all that, David, I thought it was Jane Valley, but.
You can do that.
Sweet. Even though it's like five sides away, there is the same pattern at both the school sites that I am at. It's the jump from fifth to sixth, seeing increases in both Language Arts and in Math. At Career, we had a 5% gain. And then at, in Math, we had a 7% gain. So one thing we are focusing on this year at all sites is we do have people piloting. And we're piloting Math and right now. And then we are hoping that by the end, we can choose something that will guide those numbers in the district overall. And then I'll come back to you for Valley in five slides.
Thank you, Leah.
Okay, for Lake Canyon, a few things that our team noted. We were very pleased in ELA to see our overall growth, grow 2% from 48 to 50%. And we attribute this to our targeted intervention systems, our strong multi-tiered systems of supports. And we, in school and even after school, many, many sessions were happening that were personalized and targeting gaps. And even acceleration is also important to us. In the area of mathematics, we were pleased to see the cohort from fifth to sixth grade grew 4% in the area of mathematics. And in checking in with the sixth grade teachers and reflecting together, one of the, the teachers commented that she can think of a few things that they did in sixth grade with both of the home room classes that attributed to the growth that we see in mathematics. They engaged in individual goal-setting for MAP testing and Sback testing. They graphed all of their MAP test scores throughout the year so that students could visually track their own progress. The incorporation of Khan Map Accelerator, which targeted learning gaps and also served as an extension for students who were above grade level. And the incorporation of Extra Map to address math fluency, and that's multiplication and division specifically. And that's another tech integration product. Something else in the area of ELA, we noted the fourth grade to fifth grade cohort had 12% growth. And in checking in with the fifth grade with their data reflection, they cited that this year they implemented targeted leveled ability groups in the area of reading, specifically looking at comprehension. And so they incorporated engaging novel studies and project-based learning. And one teacher said that it was interesting when those, those leveled groups were meeting in their teams that the groups would lean in and, and be intrigued and wanting to listen to the student conversations that were happening based around the content and how engaged the learners were. And they were eager to, to read the next book that a group of peers was engaged in. And so that helped to help to support their love of reading. Thank you. Very pleased overall, particularly in Language Arts. We're getting close to that 60% mark for our achievement there. And even though you might not see cohort growth, I think it's important to keep in mind that cohorts are not always the same from year to year. And that there are times when we get an influx of new students, particularly for us last year in fifth grade, we got 15 new students, which really changed the dynamic at that grade level. We've done a, a, a good dive into looking at our data. And I think that particularly in Language Arts, that strong foundation that's created by our primary teachers is extremely helpful as kids move into those intermediate grade levels. And then we incorporated some really solid small group instruction for benchmarks. I think that really helped to really focus on where kids are at with their particular reading skills. In the area of math, we definitely came down in our scores for math and we know what we need to do. We've got some good things started. But there's another step to the things that we started last year that we need to incorporate this year in terms of building thinking classrooms and having kids come back and, and have that direct instruction model combined with building thinking classrooms. So we've done a lot of work with that. And we have children who need intervention already targeted for that and we have that ready to go, so. I'd like to talk to Valios too about their sixth grade scores.
So at River Oaks, I think one of the things we're all proud of is the amount of growth, even though it may be just 1%, we're making growth. We're steady. We're, we're picking, it's a marathon. They remind us all the time, it's a marathon. It's not a sprint. And I'd rather see us continue that uprising and very excited and very proud to see the ELA scores growing in all grade levels. However, you know, we know the work to be done in math. One of the things that we incorporated as well this year was many of our cohorts in math began the building thinking classrooms learning. And our coaches through SCOE, you know, they've shared, you know, the data will have a little, little dip that that is a common trend. And as teachers are adjusting to this, learning this, what I am able to have the pleasure of getting to be able to watch is more engagement in math, more language happening in math. And I think that that's all we're seeing, the effects of that in ELA. We're seeing kids talk and engage more. And that's transferring into their expressing of themselves and their thinking. And I feel as if the plans we have through our learning continuums that we're going to be doing, our PDSA cycles and the academic conferences we have, we're going to be meeting some grade levels collectively. How can we have shared practices? What worked last year for these kids? How can we transfer that in the next grade level to keep that momentum going and not restart each year with these kiddos? So we want to pick up the momentum in math and make those instructional decisions, having the discernment, looking at the data and not just one set of data, constantly looking at different sets. Are the kids now coming to school? And now, and they went last year, those kinds of things. So we're just excited to see the engagement and things taking off.
Thank you, River Oaks.
I'm back. Okay, huge shout out to sixth grade at Valios. They have the and go there yet, across the district. I would even want you to say probably in Stat County. When you look at, I, I did, I actually looked at the schools that are just like us on that report that Cleo has shared, and you guys are way up there in your growth. I would say, due to that success, it's kind of what Kim has shared. We're hoping that that can be, you know, part of the focus of our, our population at Valley Oaks is different. And they have different needs. So an equity, you know, type model, in that case. Again, we're forging forward with adoption coming soon. That will hopefully help all students with math because the practices of BTC are built in to those programs. And then ELA scores also, I, I think for sixth grade, they do a lot of writing. So that's a huge contributor to that as well. So, thank you.
So before we go to the next slide, I do want to highlight that the growth we are seeing in sixth grade, I've never seen before. It is impressive. It's something that we really need to study. It's something that I am super curious about because I've never seen this. I don't know how they did it. Obviously, it was with a lot of hard work, very focused approach. I'm sure there were specific strategies, certain expectations that they did not deviate from. But I do think that we really have to ask the teachers who taught that group of children, how did you make that happen? I've never seen that. Not only are we looking at the number, right? Because yes, the number is impressive. But I am going to put Kadeen on the spot because she shared something that you also noticed with that seventh, I mean, sorry, with that sixth grade group. something that you also noticed with that seventh, I mean, sorry, with that sixth grade group that it was more than just the academics. Can you just briefly tell us what you noticed with the children?
About the behavior?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. Um, so the group of students coming from sixth grade as fifth graders versus the si- the same group of students as sixth graders. The uh you you can just tell there is a whole different level of expectation for them. Uh, they participate, they don't seem to really think that that, you know, they don't ask if there's an option, they just are expected to. And I really think it has to do with the high expectations of our sixth grade team, so. Definitely has something to do with them. Oh my gosh.
So yes, I
I remember.
But I I do think that when we look at numbers, keep in mind that there are children behind those. We're talking about children and when children get results like that, then the child changes, right? Now they they're going into middle school thinking, yeah. Put any challenge you want in front of me, put any writing you want in front of, I will do it because of of how of the success they saw and felt in sixth grade will carry into seventh. So it's the point that I'm trying to make is, yes, the numbers are impressive, but it's much more than that. It's a lot more than that. And and I do think that maybe we might want to ask that team of teachers to meet with all of our administrators and we can pose all kinds of questions to them as a panel to find out how how did you do in the group?
How do we do that?
And so so with that, thank you, Valley. Congratulations, sixth grade. And we will move on to is McCaffrey, McCaffrey's our last school. Thank you, Carlos.
Well, thank you. Um, I do have to first commend what we talked about earlier about the incoming seventh graders that are coming in right now. For first of all, uh, we do see a difference with the behavior and our interactions with each other. So there there is a huge difference that we're seeing. That's why I know we're going to see the results. I mean, I'm having students come up and give me a fist pump and good morning, Mr. Castillo. How are you doing? Today we had a student, I'm sharing this because it it translates into what we'll see hopefully this year. When you have a student coming in, hey, I have my seventh grade teacher that I want to give her a birthday card. So they were walking around asking, so that that's the behavior that we're seeing that's going to translate to this. And as you can see from our data points, we went from fifty one percent to fifty percent to sixty one percent in seventh grade. That is, that is a huge jump that that we've seen. And I attribute that to the literacy plan that we have across every every uh core class that we have. The other thing that we did that is also as an admin team, we wanted to see if the reading routine, which is part of literacy and plan, is actually being implemented with fidelity in every class. It was and it wasn't. So it was good feedback last year as we sat down and reviewed it with some of the social science department as well as the science department, which now comes into this year that we're putting back to Cali group. And we're looking at creating more instructional rounds to be able to see how each one of them is doing the literacy plan across cross-curricular, which makes a huge difference. Uh, it goes back to what was said earlier, I think that was discussed about behavior. Eighth grade, we DC a slight drop, but we were really surprised that we kind of maintained. Um, and that was attributes to when we talk about participation, engagement and following that. I mean, I've walked in the classrooms when the teacher is pointing out like, here's the answer and students are not engaging at that point. So there is a difference of the students that we're seeing as they come through. Math, of course, is 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 of course one of our high priorities this year. We're um currently working. Um, and you know, we can go through different things or point different fingers and and figure out the causes. We know that we had a high, we keep getting a turnover rate with our teachers in the math department. That attributes that. So that that's difficult when you get a new teacher and then all of a sudden they do great and all of a sudden they say, hey, you know what? I'd like to go to high school. So it's difficult to maintain that currently right now. I guess, you know, we're we're still working on trying to fill a position. Uh, but with the help of uh Mostel Toro as well as our outside consultant, we have a pretty pretty plan, a great plan that we're going to work with the math department. They have worked over the summer to create common pacing guides as well as using um assessments. Um, but the goal now is to how do you read those assessments? And then you have those PLC meetings. What questions are we asking that you're not asking? Well, they didn't perform well. That's it. No, it's the questions is how was the question asked? Do the students understand it? Do we have to go back and reteach this? When do we teach this? And what strategies and interventions are we going to put in place? So we have our first academic conference with our math department, actually we from today, to really dive into where they're at and looking at the PDSA and are they are they having those conversations? Again, we're, we have a long term stuff right now. We're still trying to fill and we have one that that we're trying to work that we keep permanently. So those are some things that 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 we're dealing with. But as you can see, now we still kind of maintain in the thirties with the seventh grade, eighth grade, we had other things that happened. But I think with the plan and what we're looking at moving forward, we'll hopefully we'll see some growth. Of course, with the implementation of new curriculum, hopefully that will streamline a lot of things.
Thank you, Carlos. So before we move on to uh some the rest of the of the data, you have any questions for our admin team? Okay, so next slide.
Thank you for carrying.
Yes, thank you. So the the CAST test assesses science standards. The goal is an achievement level of three or four. And it is administered to students in grades five and eight. Next slide. So here you have the CAST results by the percent of students who met or exceeded the standards. Good night, ladies. Thank you. The percent of students who met or exceeded the standards as well as by individual achievement level. Both fifth and eighth grade are close to the thirty percent. And Lake Canyon is almost at forty percent. So good job, Lake Canyon. Next slide is LPAC. LPAC assesses English proficiency and the goal is to obtain an overall level of four. And it is administered to all English learners in grades kinder through eighth grade. Next slide. As a district, we show twenty two percent of our English learners at a level four. The data is broken down by grade and by level. Notice that we show a greater percentage in grades six, seven, and eight. Um, and this is the time in which we have the largest number of ELs being reclassified. So once a child reaches a level four, we look at other local criteria and we see, we identify children that need to be reclassified. So it is unlikely that you will see percentages like in the eighties because it wouldn't happen because once they reach that level four, we reclassify them as English proficient. So the last slide and to summarize, tonight we shared a few data sets on S back, on CAST, on LPAC. Also know that we have shared with you and we analyze MAP and DRA. We have local assessments in Benchmark and Amplify, Eureka, CPM. We look at grades, we look at attendance, all that to say that we we recognize how important it is to use multiple measures before making any instructional decisions. So with that, do you have any questions or any comments on our data?
I know it's still very early, but it's like attendance is is pretty high right now. It's within the school year, I imagine everyone's. Yeah, you know, I haven't looked at percentages or anything yet, but usually attendance is pretty good the first couple of weeks.
We can share.
We want to share.
Yeah, because this is quite a success. Prior to COVID.
Prior to COVID, uh, when we're talking about excessive absenteeism, right, which is uh ten percent of the school year. Prior to COVID, we were under ten percent. I think that was pretty normal across the board. COVID hit, we came back and at least at Valley Oaks, I think it was pretty similar across the board, right around fifty percent. Fifty half of our students were chronically absent. And over the past two years, we cut it from like around fifty to around twenty. Yeah, I might be off a couple of percentages. And then from last year, the previous year to this year, we have twelve?
Eleven.
Eleven. So almost in half each consecutive year. So we're very close to where we were with excessive absenteeism, um, or chronic absenteeism, close to where we were pre-pandemic. Um, and believe me, it hasn't been easy. It's a lot of work, a lot of work. Our assistant principals um have put in a lot of time, our secretaries, the counselors, a lot of time. Almost to the point of, at lowest, I had a conversation with Lois where I was like, I'm not even sure it's worth the time that we're putting in. I really did doubt that, right? Because it was so much time. And I felt bad, you know, uh, Leah spent, you know, a lot of time talking with parents and everything else. But in the end, we we achieved a result that we were really looking for, we were hoping for. And I think that those, that pattern, um, is probably typical of all the elementary school.
Yeah.
Um, but it it it's been great. It's been great to see it get back to or close to where we were pre-pandemic, so.
Definitely looking at last year, our ADA went up. And so I'm just not too sure. We haven't run the report yet, but the first, you know, week or so, but definitely all of our school sites, even McCaffrey. ADA, ADA went up. We're definitely getting closer to pre-pandemic attendance levels.
So moving on.
So no question, no questions. Lot of great growth. I know our teachers that were here already left, but we've seen the growth of administrators and school staff, our support staff, it really takes everybody, you're classified. Um, but there's a lot of great work. Uh, this district should feel proud about the growth that we're seeing and I feel like we almost, I don't want to say forgotten about it, but I feel like we almost don't have to think about the world of COVID that we're really back to, back to normal, seeing normal growth, seeing normal data, kids coming back to school. Um, it's it's good. Lot of work though, David's right. It's been, it's it's been a lot of work in lots of areas and we haven't talked about that. Uh, is is what we're doing paying off? And and how do you know that? And I think we're starting to have multiple data sets, like Liz said, there's a lot we look at to reflect and think, okay, what we're doing is worth it. So, good job.
Okay, so moving on to the next report, Quay. DLI. Says the board probably remembers our first dual-language immersion cohort began their journey at Parasite. This group of children completed kindergarten last year and now isn't sitting in first grade at Valley Oaks. So Laura and David will share the progress with our DLI program.
We wanted to start by sharing um some background, the essentials of dual-language immersion. So Quay, can we go to the next slide, please? That's our vision statement, which I thought I could even read from here, but I cannot. Um, but we established this special statement uh five years ago, so before our core program even got started. Um, but the team worked with um some consultants and we came up with that. We felt that it was important to have that before the actual implementation of the program. So we knew what direction we were going in. And essentially, our dual-language immersion vision statement is based on the three pillars of dual-language immersion. And those three pillars are bilingualism and biliteracy. So by the end of the program, children will be able to understand, speak, read, and write in two languages, Spanish and English. Academic achievement, which is a goal for all academic programs, but in this case it's academic like academic achievement in two languages. And the third one is sociocultural competence, and that has to do with one's um development of identity and also the cross-cultural understanding. So those are the three pillars and that's what teachers are working towards. And um off, there's a quote there off to the side that mentions the um dominant, English-dominated students are purposefully integrated with Spanish-dominated. So we work really hard to maintain balance in all of our classes so that half of the students are English-dominated, half of the students are Spanish-dominated. Those are the languages represented in our program. The students have um a good number of peers to interact with, to learn from, to practice the language with. And the thing about, one of the things about dual-language immersion, it is an additive program. So the students, all students, whether they're English-dominated or Spanish-dominated, are maintaining their primary language and learning a second one in addition to. They are not losing their primary language and replacing it with a secondary language. And this is the instructional model our program follows, ninety-ten. And so you can see that for preschool TK and kinder years, ninety percent of the instruction is in Spanish, ten percent is in English. And then starting in first grade, the percentages change. So gradually it's less Spanish, more English. And then in fourth grade through sixth grade, it's fifty-fifty. Because again, the goal is bilingualism and biliteracy. So at that point, they have already learned to read and write in both languages. They are strengthening and maintaining their skills in all academic areas.
All right, thank you, Laura. So there's a lot of really great things going on at Valley Oaks, right? It's a a great time to be at Valley Oaks. Uh, we're showing improvement in a lot of different areas and a lot of grade levels, but we're also introducing this new program, this district-wide program, DLI. So um what we see here, uh, in in, and this is just a a further explanation of the previous slide, is kind of how those minutes change with each grade level. Um, so more is added uh in English as they progress. This first page shows from uh preschool and TK uh through first grade and and kind of how the minutes uh change in in the first grade. This year we have first grade students and they're doing the eighty-twenty model this year. Uh, and the next slide, it shows uh the second through fifth grade um language allocation and what that will look like as these cohorts begin to go into the uh the next grades as more is added. Uh, yeah, in terms of content, we we see that it's it's in third grade where reading and writing is start, begun to be introduced as as a regular uh instructional uh uh subject in terms of uh uh in English, uh while they are receiving um English. It's like a um but it's like uh they're learning English a little bit uh formally in the in the younger grades. Third grade is where, you know, we start getting into like formal English um reading and writing. And then as it moves into fifth, we get or fourth and fifth, we get to the fifty-fifty model. Um, and as it moves beyond sixth grade, which is on the next slide, um and then moving to middle school, uh, it it changes a little bit more as it moves into middle school. So that's just kind of a a basic overview of what it looks like. But what's interesting or what's great about the program is that the same curriculum that we use in English, we use in Spanish. So the benchmark in 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 English, we use benchmark in Spanish. Instead of benchmark advanced, it's called benchmark. Uh, and for Eureka math that we're using, we have the Eureka math in Spanish. So uh we're using the same curriculum and the teachers who have been teaching previously are already used to what the curriculum and how it is taught. Now it's just they're teaching it in a different, in a different language. Uh, we use SIPs as a as a basic model for early literacy instruction. And our district has created something very similar to SIPs called SSRI that follows a similar uh pattern of uh early uh primary or early language instruction, but on the Spanish level. And so we use that in our in our lower grades as well. Um, our teachers are are highly trained. We've had multiple trainings over the last, gosh, four years now probably, and uh trained by experts in uh in the state of California who have worked at uh or worked with uh multiple schools uh throughout the state who have already implemented uh DLI, dual-language immersion models. And uh those trainers or instructors will continue with us uh this year and I would imagine uh ongoing in into future years as well. Uh, what's really nice to see at at Valley Oaks this year is that that group of uh first grade, we know that at uh at the parasite level, we have preschool and and TK uh students in the program. And now at at Valley Oaks, we have uh the kinder students and two classes of kinder and two classes of first grade. So the students who are in first grade, uh, many of them have had, this is their third year uh of instruction uh in Spanish. And um invite anybody and everybody to come by and check it out because it it is, if if we haven't seen it and we're not used to it, it can, it can be a little mind-blowing to see what you would see is not traditionally uh Spanish-speaking, looking kids uh participating and reading, writing, and speaking uh in Spanish. It's it's terrific. Um, we have uh going into next year, we'll have another two classes. Um, and we've had a waiting list. And unfortunately for some of those who have been on the waiting list, um, it's a popular program. We only lost one student, you know, from kinder to first. Um, and there's more that are interested in in participating in the program and have had multiple inquiries already this year um about what's the future growth of the program going to look like. Uh, so uh great things are happening with the program and just a little piece of data on the next slide. Keeping in mind that uh this is our district reading assessment, it's given to all kindergarten students. Um, both in the English-speaking and the and the Spanish-speaking, this is just uh the results. Um, both in, uh, the English speaking and the, and the Spanish speaking. This is just, uh, the results. Of our students in the dual language immersion program. Keep in mind, this is English dominant. Spanish dominant, all of them combined. When given the district reading assessment in trimester one, seventy five percent of them. Okay, English speaking, Spanish speaking, met the Spanish. Benchmark for, for district rate, uh, reading. In the second trimester, ninety five percent of them, and again in the third trimester. So this means of all the students in the, in the DLI program, there were only two. Uh, that did not meet the end of the year benchmarks for reading in Spanish. Uh, so. Could be a great cohort, could be the program, whatever it is, we want to keep, we want to keep it going. But it is, um, it's been a great success. Part of the success, I, we will say has, or a lot of the success has to do with. Uh, parents and their involvement and, um. You know, not only their physical involvement, but their willingness to promote, uh, the success of the program with their children. Uh, just real quick, um, an experience that I had today, I was in, uh, in line, um, with the, as the kinders were coming through the, um. The food line and I'm at the end of the line and they're getting their stuff. I'm kind of helping them out and one of the food workers, uh, kitchen workers is new to Valley Oaks. Not even aware that we have a DLI program. And these little, you know, little kids are coming by and I'm speaking to them in Spanish and la leche, you know, and things like that. And, and. And at one moment she says. So you're speaking Spanish to all of these kids? How do they even know what you're saying? And I was like, well, it's part of the, the program that we have. And she's like, but those guys are like. Blonde haired, blue eyed kids. And I'm like, yeah, they, and they get it. And they're speaking back to me and she's like. That's amazing. I said, it is amazing. You gotta see him in class. So, uh, great program. It's, uh, wonderful to be. Kind of a pioneer with that in the district and we're excited about it.
Thank you, David, allowing your leadership. We're heading this program and getting it going. And it's, it is pretty amazing, even at the preschool.
Yeah.
Their partner sharing just in Spanish. It's just, oh my gosh, how is this happening?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So we will move on to, um, California dashboard, local performance indicator adjustment. Yes. So thank you. This past June, we presented, um, our local performance indicator self reflection. You probably remember that. At that time, the data on teacher assignment monitoring was from the twenty one, twenty two school year. Uh, what we have for you tonight is an updated self reflection. If you take a look at page four. You will now see that the data on the teacher assignment monitoring section now reflects. Data from the twenty twenty two, twenty three school year. So this adjustment will now be reflected in this year's California dashboard, which will become public sometime in early December. Everything else in that report remained the same. And we just wanted to make sure you knew it was just an, an adjustment or an update to that data because we did not have access to that. Until after, um, we brought it to you the first time. Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I can start this. This is, um, just a discussion right now, just starting a discussion with the board. Related to student smartphone use on campus. We recently received a letter from Governor Newsom, um, basically summarizing. The distraction cell phones can be to the educational learning environment. And. Reminding us that districts boards have the incentive to regulate the use of cell phones. I've included that letter and I've also included our current or policy related to conduct, which states, um. Our policy for cellphone use now, basically. Students have them on them during the school day, but they should be off and they should be put away. So they should be in their backpack. But we are not taking their phones, um, you know. And we've not regulated it any further to that point right now. There are some districts across the state, even in Sacramento County, that are starting to implement. More restrictions for cell phones at school. Um. I met with a couple just in our county, our last superintendent meeting, different. Some of the districts shared out what they're implementing this year. Um, one or two school districts are piloting at one or two of their schools. Um, I think they're called yonder pouches. Um, to where students are required to put their phone in a pouch and it's locked up pretty much for the day. I don't even think they get signals when they're in these pouches. Some are just starting the discussion. As well, so, um, there are two assembly bills. Right now, two in front of the legislature. Actually, there's one. There's one assembly bill and there is a senate bill that. Will go through the, the legal process. We'll see if anything passes or not. But both of those would add more restrictions to students' cellphone use on campuses as well. I don't know if this is something the board would want to. Survey our parents, survey our staff. Is there a need to us? Looking at putting more restrictions on cellphone use? Is this not something that we want to? Address right now? Do we feel that we're okay? Our principals have shared, yes, cell phones are distracting, but a lot of the distraction happens. When students are at home using social media. And then it carries over into the school day and they're dealing with a lot of that, where of course. Taking their phones from them, having them put it in a pouch or box or whatever it might be, we're not going to change that. But I also not going to say cell phones aren't distracting during the day either. Um, you know, do teachers have to deal with or administrators have to deal with, you know, taking phones away? Cause we do have rules. If you get a warning, right? And then we do confiscate the phone. Uh, I think the child, the student would get, get it back at the end of the day. If it happens again, then parents have to come to school and pick up the phone. Um, does that happen? Sure, that happens. Do you have kids with their phone out during passing period or during lunches, recess, those types of things? I know there will be, if the board decides to. Research possibly doing something different. I know we'll have lots of feelings about this on both sides. Um, we do have parents that definitely want their children to have that cellphone and want them to have it for, um, safety reasons, check their locations. Um, want to be able to text them during the school day and for their child to quickly see it. Strictly and, and put the phone away. I mean, there's, there's a lot of that. So, um. You know, again, either way, I, I think this would be a, a debated topic. For both sides, if the board wants to discuss. Some stricter restrictions with the cellphone. But I wanted to make sure you knew that it is in your authority. We can do that as a board or you can do that as a board. We can do that as a school district. Um, and we might be forced to make some changes if any of these bills were to pass. I don't know if any of our principals, I did give them a heads up that this was going to be, going to be a discussion. If you want to share any of your thoughts on it or.
I do think that work policy does need to be looked at. It needs to become a little bit more specific too with the use of cell phones. It needs to pertain to school activity usage as well. We've had issues where kids were bringing cell phones on field trips. And taking them out just because they weren't at school, but it's still during school hours. Um, the other issue that we've had. And it happens every year are the watches. And parents will say, well, that's their watch. No, it's a cellphone. Because you can text directly from here and that's not in our work policy.
So I had, I mean, I had a thought. I'm glad you brought it cause I think that's, for me, all my questions I had about. Eight, that word like implementation questions and resource questions, um. And, um, you know, I'm trying to put aside the governor's letter just because I think the motivations maybe there are not. You know, the largest school district, just to, just to prove something and perhaps helping them implement or vice versa, chicken eggs. So I was trying to put that aside and say, okay. What makes sense? But all of my questions were related to implementation. So I am totally open to. Discussing, maybe seeing what happens in some of the other districts. I know your husband has had some positive experiences in this class. But having it on a district wide basis, I think there's a lot more that needs to be taken into consideration. Is there an emergency plan? What happened? You know, when it's, when it's. Things like that, that I think we need to be, you know, and maybe we want to just teach these, help teach these students to be responsible so that when we go out into the world. They're not going to go to work and their boss is not going to say, you need to lock up your cellphone. They need to learn responsibility behavior. And are we necessarily. Teaching them by just saying, you know, a blanket, no cellphone, although I know that it's probably very helpful in the classroom, but. Are they, is it a all or nothing? Or is there something in between that can be very practical and reasonable and feasible from an implementation perspective? And I don't know if they pass those bills, if they would also add funding to the mandated program? Would they add funding for like all of the pouches and all of the things? Cause I don't know that we have that.
Right. Sometimes they add funding and then a lot of times there's not.
So I would just be, oh, sorry. I was just be curious what, what, how much of a problem it is. I think at the middle school, you're probably seeing more of that. And as opposed to more, you know, probably every seventh and eighth grader, ninety nine percent has this as a phone. Um, so I. Um, I know that there's policy and then there's what is done. And so I'm, I just would like to know. Are you guys able to enforce your ideal? Do you have the resources? Like, do the teacher, I know that the teachers may or may not want to even deal with it. In a classroom situation, um, but I think. It can be a slow creep where a teacher can start out kind of like lenient and like, okay, I'll let you guys keep your phones. With you as long as I don't see them and then kind of as it goes, cause their brains are not fully developed. They are making decisions about. Attention span and usage. And we have to remember they're like. Being conditioned to intake information in thirty second TikTok videos. And that is just not good for developing brain to do. So. I would like to know, especially not, I'm not trying to ignore the elementaries, cause I think there's a whole host of issues having to do with privacy and having to do with, you know. Video, like taking videos and when somebody thinks they're not being videoed and, um, I know Instagram and, uh, you know, there's online bullying going on as to what's recorded at school. I know that. When there's fights and conflicts, every kid is running up and trying, well, we try not to let them do that, but it's like they want to video it and it's all over. Social media. So I think there are so many aspects to this, but I guess my number one question is. How much of a problem is it? And what's being, you know, how are you guys struggling to keep up or how is it? That's basically my question.
Well, the, the, well, coming from a middle school standpoint, as well as my high school experience that I had, there, there's a couple of things that I'm concerned about the, the phone to be in house. One, I've seen situations where students take a picture of another teacher. And then create a fake account of the teacher and it's happened recently at McCaffrey and it's also that this year, but it's happened and it's happened at other sites. So that's another concern. Um, the other concern that we run into is of course, like you mentioned earlier, the fights. Um, and then they record the fight, then it all of a sudden it's spread like wildfire. So then the original person who sent it becomes part of that conflict. And then now you have these issues happening. Um, I did, you made a good point right there. The only way things work is that every teacher is a parent.
That's right.
So during my staff meetings, it, it, and even during our leadership meetings, we can't say. Okay, you can have it out. No, you can't. Either it's none or all because it's not fair. For the teacher, well, teacher A says, I can have it out. Teacher B, then it becomes that issue. So we haven't had that, but Jordan, I think all of our staff is in favor of like, no, it's a cell phone policy. And, and a lot of it is, we give a warning. You know, turn it and pick it up after school, show some responsibility. Two is now your parent has to pick it up. And then three, of course, now there's the other option is, okay, bring your cellphone. We just lock it up, put it for you. In our office. What I was thinking lately is creating a locker. For those students that violated where everybody can like, uh, office staff around, they can go in there. Okay, you got your phone locked here. It is not where it's at. The issue we run into is some of them has a phone and we're trying to figure out who has it. So we're looking at a more systemic approach to put one location phone that's been confiscated. Okay, now I know who it is. It, it, it is an, an issue because then we have situations that I, I think I know most, uh, the other issue, they create Instagram accounts called slacking. Well, kids are smart. Uh, they come up with ways to figure things out and I can't even figure it out. And then you kind of quickly take a picture, take a picture of. Somebody sitting down on the bench and then all of a sudden they take that picture and post it on social media. And everybody starts commenting on that. Then you guys, then you have to deal with the mental health, mental health aspect of that student. Who their picture was on social media. Now you gotta deal with the parents. So there, there's all these things that happen with it. And, and I do agree, we, we can't say it's okay in this class. It's across the board. Um, we do have, we do let students know. Um, we say if there, if your parent is trying to communicate with you, find an admin. Find somebody say, hey, my mom is trying to communicate with me. Can I check it? A lot of majority of our students take that responsibility and say, Mr. Castillo, my mom just text me, I think I text my mom, can I check it? Sure, as long as I'm right here visible. Not a problem. Um, and. The other concerns that we do share is, and this is something that we talk about, it's a safety concern. Sometimes students will go about to text their parent, I'm not feeling well, I'm sick. But they don't come up to the office. So then I have a parent coming in here looking for, nobody knows that the student is sick. And then they're in the office. So then the parent, his parent becomes upset thinking that he knew. And that, that is, or you might always tell students, I go, you gotta let us know. If you pass out in the bathroom. Or you're getting sick and you pass out, we don't know. So you just come up here and let us know. So. Those are the things happening and sometimes they communicate to their parents that they're being harassed, then we don't know. And then also we have. Three or four or five parents in our offices that we have no idea what's happening. So. That, that causes a lot of.
I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to start a discussion.
No, no, I just.
But I, I appreciate your feedback. Yeah, but. Yes, yes, we need that. Yeah. And so, yeah, it's here. I, all that to say, I'm real interested in this discussion, especially, you know, as a parent at a seventh grader and just. All, just everything that encapsulates a cellphone issue. I think there's so many. Just ways we can look at it and so many potential problems. I think parents, you know, I'm not that old, but like I would not have. Considered wanting to have a constant communication with my, uh, parents during the school day. And that is a huge cultural shift. That we are maybe that we at this table like never would have considered.
Right.
Was the parents to parents and students. And that, I think that's where it comes in. To parents is where you're going to have that pushback is they just want to have that constant communication. And there's. You know, there's a lot that comes with that. And so I, what, what I'm hearing about, can I check my texts? You know, can I like, that's a lot of back and forth between administrators and a lot of. I mean, that's just a lot. So, yeah, I am interested in this. And if there's anything that I can do to be more involved. With investigating this, you know, I'm, I'm happy to, to be involved in that. So.
Would you like us to survey middle school parents?
I think that would be some good data to have. Yeah. As far like how they feel about, uh. What they expect, how much they expect to be able to communicate with their kid, what they think the cellphone should be used for. Um, during the school day or, you know, what are their expectations of that? Or do they think it, it's, they're just sending it just for safety? You know, like that kind of thing, I think would be helpful to know what their attitudes are. Or if I'd like, I'm even wondering, cause I think the tide is changing on this. I think. People are starting to really understand how much it's changing our kids. Ways of taking information. I think this is fairly new as far as people's awareness. And so I just want to know if parents are concerned about it. Cause I think a lot of parents feel like, you know, now they need to have, let their child have access to a phone, but like, are you? Are you worried about it? Or are you, what do you like, what are, educationally, do you think this is good or just expectations surrounding that? So.
If we can have one last thing, it's interesting you said that because we did do a quick. Presentation for our P class. We talked about cellphone use policies. I ask students. How many years are you on your phone? Two hours a day? So basically half, how many are you? Three hours a day? Six hours a day? Some were actually at eight hours a day that they're on their cellphone and we're an average of probably twenty students per of those classes. So, I mean, you're right. When we have twenty kids with more than six hours on their cell phones.
Yeah.
I think the messaging. As far as expectation. And then my other comment was, I know my like. Daughter's, um, soccer coach, I'm not soccer coach, well, I will coach or, you know, the coaches would contact them during the day if they had a change in practice or a change in their. Schedule. So I don't know how that would be accommodated. Maybe it's more of a high school issue or a middle school. Where they have sports, um, you know, school sports, you know? Um, and then the other thing is, are the teachers also held to the same expectation? Um. So that, I, I don't know what the practice is with, with teachers, cause you don't want the students to see whether it's legitimate or not, sort of like, you know, um. It's okay for you, but not for me, right? Like they, they flew into that pretty quickly. It's okay for you, but not for me, right? Like, they, they flew into that pretty quickly. I mean, I know there's a whole host of things that. That teachers can do that students, you know, shouldn't be able to do, um, but. I think of just the, the whole messaging and a lot of the, the questions around it, I think are super, super important, but I'm, I'm open to it as well. But I'd be interested to hear again if.
We have two not here tonight, but maybe, maybe a, a start is just working on a survey. And see what kind of feedback we get and I, I think I'd probably just want to give it to middle school parents right now, yeah, start there, yeah, and see what we, see what we get. Um, and I can grab some policies, some sample policies that I know other districts are using to pilot. Some changes, just to see what their implementation plan is.
Are they implementing it now?
River Delta is implementing, they're in a pilot year with one of their schools right now. And I think Folsom is in year two with a couple of their middle schools.
They might actually have results.
I, not yet River Delta, but maybe Folsom, cause I think they started last year. And I think they expanded it to a couple more middle schools this year, I think, but I, I'll double check, but I. If they start cheating, you know that, if you heard that, I think they started last.
Yeah, I think they started last year, but in those pouches, like we were talking about, it's about thirty thousand.
Oh, yeah, no, it's very expensive.
I'll tell you, funny, funny thing about the pouches, my youngest son told me is that you can order off of Amazon for ten dollars. And get the magnet that unlocks them.
They lock your phone and then you get it back when you need.
I think there's much more economical options.
I had a pocket chart, remember pocket chart, put your phone in there, you know, for the day, I think the class period. Alright, more to come, definitely not solving this problem right now. But yeah, it's worth looking at. So, um, other reports, Williams, uniform complaints, there's no, um, no complaints to report. Uh, we have a cast meeting, uh, we had that, let's see, August twelfth, we had our cast meeting. I'll give you a few updates there. We had Chief Kalanowski that attended and he discussed, um, the SRO program. And schedules for the officers. We also debriefed on, um, that same day, we actually had all of our, our SRO team. Come and meet with our administrative team, um, after school and reviewed schedules, we reviewed. Protocol, we talked about some changes that we wanna make to the character counts program. Um, and so we shared that at the cast meeting as well, um, the police department wants to be more visible at parent. Gatherings or functions this year, for example, fall festivals, trunk or treats, the picnic on the green grounds, things like that, so they're gonna try to. Coordinate with the principals to be more visible to parents as well, but parent events. Um, I shared Measure H updates, I shared our new school enrollment update, which I've shared tonight. Um, it was our first cast meeting with the new superintendent, Anna Tranel. Um, she shared they've implemented, um, a staff ID badge program. I guess they did not have staff wearing ID badges. And they really implemented that this year. Um, they are trying to fill some special education vacancies still as well. And she just said, you know, trying to get to know the staff and, and her team, she has a couple new directors, she shared that, they did hire. Um, two new directors and so the cabinet team is, is all new, so she's. Been going with that. City of Galt, they shared that Meritage Homes is a home developer that has purchased. Um, some lots in the Liberty Ranch, um, development. They should start pulling permits here within the next month and we should start seeing homes out there. They also shared that the goal is to move the Winter Bird Festival back to McCaffrey. And so they want to, they, they talked about really getting the bird festival, trying to get it back to as large as it was a few years ago. So I think the city manager is going to work on having somebody that organizes that. Uh, might even be in a new position. I think somebody shared that in the past, and John probably knows this, in the past, they had a position. That organized this, and so I don't know if they have that anymore, but there was a. A, a commitment to get it going stronger again. So I said, yes, we can use McCaffrey. Uh, they wanna get back to where they have field trips out to the preserve.
Having, having the school facility where we could have cafeteria and all the purpose room and, and library and classrooms. It'd be a huge boost for the community and for the district, but we're excited.
Yeah, a painting night and they just really brought up all kinds of things we had a long time ago with the bird festival, so. More to come with that. And then he also shared, of course, if you've driven around Galt in the last couple of weeks, all the. See the improvements in the works, so just give yourself a little extra time when you're traveling around Galt. C Street improvement, uh, will not be done until early next year, so that's gonna be. That's gonna be a mess for a while, but it's supposed to be great when it's done, so, and he shared that you could go on the. City website and let's see, yeah, see everything that they're doing and.
I don't think the closure is supposed to last until next year.
I don't think, no, it's, no, the closure's not supposed to last until next.
I'm hoping that was.
He said for it to be finished. There's a lot of road construction over on the east side as well, Liberty Ranch, um, so just. Again, give yourself a little extra time in Galt traveling right now. And then we have last but not least, first school calendars for reports tonight, um, we will start with Fair Sight. Laura Marquez, um, this Friday, you have our first family event, um, picnic day, so families are invited from eleven to twelve. Um, to come enjoy lunch with their child, sometimes they bring lunch, sometimes they have our school lunch, but. Just a way to invite them on campus and, um, rather early in the year, so that's. That's our goal is to get more events happening and find them out throughout the whole entire year. Thank you.
We have Kona Ice coming out, we love Kona, and they donate twenty percent. Back to us and the kids and families come out, they line up about an hour prior to get their Kona Ice and then, uh, at the end of the month, we do our first. Our kickoff of the school year round depth event, that's happening on the twenty-seventh, uh, eight, ten in the morning. It's a fun one.
Thank you. Lake Canyon, Ms. Hayes.
At the end of August, in a couple of days, we have, uh, or actually mid-August, we're bringing in a magician to do an all-school assembly. And his illusions will be themed around dreaming about a bright future, so that should be. Exciting. And then in September, we start all of our rounds of academic conferences with our teachers. And so our staff is looking forward to that.
Arango.
Our sixth graders are heading up to science camp. The day after we get lunch on Labor Day, so they have four days. And we love to go early instead of late because. Such a great bonding experience for the kids and. You just develop these really close connections through the camp and so. Quiet, I'm wearing a ranch, that week, the sixth graders, he's gone.
And we repented the Arango September four movie because they got this credit, so it happens, I'm anticipating it for you. And then we have McCaffrey.
We have our back to school night tomorrow, so we're excited about that. And then on September sixth, we have. And we're talking about law enforcement, we're not gonna be out there to. Uh, end up possibly, so everybody, just to kinda be out there and have that, and then at the same time. We're gonna do our first, uh, school dance.
River Oaks, Ms. Hondas.
Um, this month we kick off the, the teachers at the end of the month bracket and the conferences, and it's a really unique one, between with multiple grade levels. Meeting together, and then in next month, the September twenty-seventh is our, um, sorry. It's our color run, um, it's our annual color run, it's a huge event, uh, all day. And we're excited, uh, families, it's a huge family.
Valley Oaks, Mr. Nelson.
Alright, well, we just had our picture day, which is really awesome, and it's early on. Everyone got dressed up really nice, so that was good, uh, staff and everyone else is looking forward to September second. Our, 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 good event that everyone's looking forward to, we, we have multiple family nights throughout the year and our first, our kickoff. Will be on September twenty-sixth with our science night, so we're looking forward to that.
We have. Lauren Lang that's retiring after fifteen years with the district, she is a special education instructional assistant at Valley Oaks. Sharkeen is retiring after twenty-six years in the district and she has most, um, recently served as the. Bright Future Learning Center Technician here at Career. Kathleen Mooney is retiring after twenty-two years in the district and she was, um, leaving as a first grade teacher over at Lake Canyon. And then Kathy Nelson is retiring after fourteen years as a special education instructional assistant, most recently at Clear. Thank you for all, there's a lot of your service right there added up.
Donation.
Yes, we had one donation, um, PDK Architects donated seventy backpacks full of school supplies, an estimated value of about seventeen hundred dollars and. As a district, we decided to donate all those supplies to Valley Oaks students. There was a nice.
Very nice, very nice backpacks.
There, we will go with, uh, the cassette calendar, routine matters, new business. To give a motion to approve the cassette calendar. Thank you, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Board acting regards student matter twenty-four, twenty-five slash oh one. Give a motion to approve the action that was.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Governor.
Thank you, I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, four, two, five, zero, three, seconded by Nick.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries three zero.
Uh, yeah, we wanted, uh, two, four, two point five zero, board, board consideration approval. The twenty-four, twenty-five school works, any proposal for demographic enrollment projections?
So due to the projected enrollment, or sorry, growth in Galt, we want to update our demographic plan. That will look at the enrollment projections and our demographics, that will give us. Um, projections for the next five, six, seven years out, to see if we have capacity at our schools, so School Works has done this for us. Um, numerous times, um, usually we updated every two to three years, the last time it was done was November twenty-twenty-two, so it's two years. And so we're asking for a recommendation or approval of this contract, we would need developer fees. And it is sixty-five hundred dollars for this study.
So anybody have any questions?
You said how long? How long does it take you really?
Usually it only takes them about a month or so, from the time that they get a signed contract from us.
Questions, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Thank you, the motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, four, two, five, zero, four, seconded by Nick.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries three zero.
Moving on to, uh, two, four, two point five zero five, uh, board consideration of approval of consultant agreement for outdoor education.
Thank you, so we are very excited to continue our, to partner with John Durand. John will serve as a part-time environmental education coordinator. It is common knowledge that John is responsible for the wonderful, wonderful partnership we now have. With the Consonus River Preserve. John began working on this project back in the nineteen nineties, so a little while ago. And in two thousand, he began building an educational program, um, that has served an entire generation of Galt children. He has secured millions of dollars in grant funding for our district to support outdoor education. He has earned several awards, including the Sierra Club Environmental Educator of the Year, the Intel Innovations in Teaching Award. The Excellence in Environmental Education Award, and all of this, sorry, is forty-five years. Of service, um, as a, a teacher and, um, consultant to our district, so we look forward, John. To all the wonderful opportunities you're gonna bring to the children. Is there anything you, you would like to add as far as? What you will do? With our district?
Certainly, well, thank you. We're continuing to grow the program, uh, expand the opportunities. Opportunities for students kindergarten through, through eighth grade and through twelfth grade. Just, it, it's an amazing and very unique partnership in the state and in the country, and so. We're so proud of the work we've done as a district and have been within here, continuing to build that for the next generations.
So we're very proud of you, John, so thank you so much. So we are asking for board approval.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you. My entertaining is the next, uh, item, two, four, two point five zero six, uh, needs to be removed. Moving on to. Two, four, two point five zero seven, board consideration approval of resolution number one, accepting final. Completion of, uh, contract for the maintenance operation shop.
So the shop over on Beaver Perkway is complete, and so, um, SMB James did another great job, um. The building's beautiful and moving in now, starting to move in and utilize that building, um, the contracted amount was. Almost two point three million, that was the proposed contract amount, the final contract amount is about seventy-six thousand over that amount. And that was due to some changes in the permit drawings and some ADA accessibility. That we had to do, um, based on the city permits, we had to, um, demolition, quite a bit of concrete and add grading and asphalt. So that the surface was ADA acceptable. And so sometimes you just don't know about those things until it, you get your permits. But other than that, there were no other change orders that were not, uh, you know. That were not expected after we got final city approval.
Questions? See, now can I get a motion, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Nick to approve item number two, four, two, five, zero, seven, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries three zero.
Moving on to, to four, two point five zero eight. For consideration of approval of the general contractor for site work for portable classrooms at the elementary.
Yes, and so the board previously already approved purchase two portals, so now we are asking for board approval for the general contractor to do the site work. That's needed to demo the portables that we need removed and then get the, um, site repaired, electrical. Um, water sewer to put in the two new, uh, portable classrooms, so we went out to bid, we had five bids. Um, that were received, they ranged from three hundred and fifteen thousand to four hundred and thirty-one thousand. RBH Construction Inc. was the lowest bid at three hundred and fifteen thousand, so they were pre-qualified. Um, they are the, the approved bidder and so with board approval, um. We would issue their, the contract. And it's three hundred and fifteen thousand and we are using the expanded learning program funds.
Any questions? So I'll make the motion to approve, you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you, the motion carries three zero.
Two, four, two point five zero nine, for consideration of approval to update the supervisory salary schedule.
Yes, after a parity study of our comparable districts, um, we are recommending. Uh, a couple of changes in the supervisory salary schedule, um, it's. Um, the parity study showed um, that it was the food service supervisor, the visual performing arts coordinator and human resource coordinator to be competitive with other districts like ours. Um, it's a range increase. So we're looking at a range increase for the food service supervisor from K to M. For the visual performing arts coordinator, um, range B to range G, and the human resource coordinator, K to N. Um, with that is approximately forty-six thousand dollars. Um, funded in various different ways, um, food nutrition funds would uh, cover part of it. The arts and music block grant would cover part of it. And then there's, there's one position that is general fund. The proposed salary schedule is attached um, for your review. When, when we first brought the salary schedule to the visual performing arts coordinator to the, the board a while back, um, we just weren't sure, it's new to us, we're unsure where to start that salary. We uh, interviewed some very great candidates and um, the feedback that we have is that the salary is just too low.
Uh, any uh, questions?
No.
May I, now can I get a motion, please?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion from Annette Kinsey to approve item number two, four, two, five, zero, nine, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries three, zero.
Uh, next one, uh, two, four, two point five, one, zero, board consideration approval of administrator daily substitute rate.
Right, we currently do not have a schedule or a salary for a daily rate for an administrator substitute. We have not used admin substitutes. Um, we would not use a substitute if the, we had a principal or assistant principal out just day to day on a Monday, Friday, I'm sick, those types of things. But we get into a situation where an administrator is on a leave perhaps, or going to be out for an extended time for some reason. Um, we would consider bringing in a sub administrator. Um, we currently, as you know, have part-time APs. And so when we're down an administrator for, you know, a few weeks at a time, or when somebody is on leave, it is, it's hard on the system. And so we do have some retirees that are interested in subbing, that have admin credentials. Um, we also have some teachers on special assignment that have admin credentials as well. And they're very interested in getting experience and exposure to the world of administration. And so, you know, who knows what might, might work out. But we wanted to have a salary scheduled just to be prepared. And we do know, um, we do have an administrator that will be going out on leave here pretty soon. So the, looking at the daily rate would be um, six hundred dollars. It'd be the daily rate for an admin sub.
Did you get that rate from my other districts?
Well, we did a kind of a, uh, you want to explain how we did that, Alejandro?
Well, we did a variety of things that we can include, um, teachers too, because at the high, at the high end of their salary schedule, we're calculating no date. And then the amount of days they work compared to a vice principal, elementary, um, middle school, and then a principal. So we try to find the middle between all the groups so that way we have applicants that want to, so they get the experience. And teachers will want to do it, but plus we have that opportunity for retirees, that middle ground.
Thank you.
Is there a limit to how long an administrator can serve as a, as a substitute?
No, as long as they have an admin, there's just certain things, I mean, you could have anybody in it kind of an admin position, but there's things that they can't do unless they have an admin credential. They can't suspend um, things like that. We wouldn't, we wouldn't, I don't see us having a substitute in place that would be working on teacher evaluations. You should have, you need to have an admin credential for that as well. And we have contract language that states you need to be the direct supervisor in order to observe teachers. So we would not have a sub do that. But definitely the day-to-day functions of a, of a school administrator, discipline, parent communication, um, you know, being there for safety, being that communication between what's going on in, in district office, um, those types of things. Depending on their experience, they, they, they could provide some, you know, run a staff meeting, um, those kinds of things. Especially if they know the district and know the school.
Any other questions? And then I'll make the motion to approve. Take a second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you for the motion from Wesley Cable to approve item number two, four, two, five, one, zero, seconded by Annette Kinsey. Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries three, zero.
Moving on to two, four, two point five, one, one, board consideration approval to piggyback on Clovis Unified School District's contract with the AZ Bus Sales to purchase three uh, more electric school buses.
Um, so a piggyback allows school districts to be able to purchase um, uh, prop, uh, personal property without competitive um, bidding. Um, so we're going to be using Clovis Unified School District. Um, the, what we're, we're trying to do is the, of the district received a, a twenty-twenty-three clean school bus relay from the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA totaling six hundred and sixty thousand. So it's three buses that we're, we're looking to replace these busses or cover the cost of the three new electric buses, charging infrastructure and other eligible expenses. Additionally, um, the district received another grant, the H, H, that standard grant, two seven hundred and twenty thousand. Um, so total combined per bus we're receiving is four hundred and sixty thousand, totaling total grant one point three million dollars. Um, the cost of the electric buses is about one point four million dollars, leaving a balance to pay out of pocket a hundred and six thousand. We do have the reimbursement from the other bus, um, which would not affect us paying the hundred and six thousand. It won't come out of general fund because we already have that sitting and restricted to cover this. So the general fund will not see the impact with a hundred and six thousand. Um, and if you have any questions about the school buses, we're in process right now, we're looking at the infrastructure, what's coming next with them too.
Um, I'm going to tell you, the last electric school bus didn't only have, has like an eighty mile range. Do these new buses have a little bit longer range?
They are, they're, they're new, right now the Lions electric bus, um, with the ACs, about eighty, eighty-five miles. And we thought it about maybe ninety, ninety-five. Um, then the new buses, the Bluebird buses we're looking at, they're looking at a hundred and thirty uh, miles. So maybe a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifteen with the AC on. So they're, they're lasting a little bit longer and Bluebird um, has more bus in California than the Lions. So it's more known from our school districts too. So we looked at quality, the type of bus, trying to see what's the best out there.
What's the name of that blue?
Bluebird.
Is that the one with the blue bumper?
Uh, Mars has a bumper, bumper, but it's a lion.
It's a lion, yeah, it's a lion.
And I know, like recently on the news, they have like this on my checkbook, on fire that was left there. There's been no like safety issues with.
For school buses now, yes.
Yeah. Thank you for the questions. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. The motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, four, two, five, one, one, seconded by Annette Kinsey.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries three, zero.
Moving on to two, four, two point five, one, two, board consideration of approval of revised elementary facility use forms and fees.
So the district's consolidating the use facility forms from six pages, three. Lot of information and we're pretty sure that many people just skim through and start signing. So the original form had multiple repetitive information and the new facilities form was attached. Um, we're doing what around surrounding districts are doing, it's just a standard covered fee versus pulling up salary, pulling up timesheet, pulling what the cost of it. We're just giving average amount per the cost of a, a food nutrition, a custodial worker. Um, for only the classes that get invoiced for the cost of it. It's, we're just standardizing the process, make it more similar to elect districts the same way. Um, that way the process is faster, more efficient, um, and more, uh, better record keeping too.
Are there any uh, questions? That's a good point, we know that better than.
Six pages, right?
So, keep it. Any questions? Do I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. The motion from Annette Kinsey to approve item number two, four, two, five, one, two, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries three, zero.
Uh, two, four, two point five, one, three, moving on, board consideration approval to change the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five regular board meeting due date to April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Yes, so the regular board meeting in April on the sixteenth is during spring break. So we are proposing to move it to the following Wednesday, the twenty-third.
Straight forward, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cable to approve item number two, four, two, five, one, three, seconded by Catherine Harper. Annette Kinsey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries three, zero.
The uh, last one for motion is to board consideration to nominate a CS, CSBA director at large, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Hispanic. Uh, does anybody have anybody? In mind, if they would.
So I really struggle with this one. Um, my first question is, do you have to be Hispanic or one of these Asian Pacific Islander to be nominated?
So I don't think so.
Okay, good, because I was going to say, I probably visibly am the only one that would fall into that. And I don't think I'm any more qualified than these two individuals, probably less of them less, because I, he's been doing this longer. So that was my concern, I thought it was very um, concerning that they had all of these other things, but there was no mention of white race, which is um, you know, representative of our population in California. So I thought it was somewhat of a racist designation, but if anybody can apply for it, I mean, like I said, I don't feel any more qualified to um, speak to school policy just because I'm Hispanic. Um, so I'm glad to hear that it's not that, and then anybody can, so, um, and.
Yeah, it doesn't say, so who could run, it's just, you just have to be board member in, in a CSBA county or district? No, I, I do not think so.
If uh, we have nobody's going to nominate, we don't need to worry about it.
No, endless, it's just that we have until, and this can, you can change, you know, if somebody comes up that you do want to nominate, we have till October fourth.
Yeah, I guess.
To nominate somebody.
Okay.
Good to know.
Maybe if Matt wanted to do it or not, I don't know. Um, okay, so. That's all, very simple, yes. Um, next one's two, four, two point five, one, five. And this is uh, going on refrigerating of board policies. Not actually required, but just.
Um, we'll, we'll highlight a few of the changes. I can start with the educational, uh, foundation. This board policy twelve sixty is just updating to add the Prop twenty-eight art music grant. And that it demonstrates how district um, can use these funds and that it is to supplement your music in our program, not supplant. Number two, um, superintendent's contract. The only thing that's really changed there is they have highlighted or they've added that the board shall not take action to terminate a superintendent without cause at a special or emergency meeting. You would have to do that at a regular board meeting. Other than that, um, really not, not a change there. Um, number three, uh, we have a board policy and AR for temporary athletic team coaches. Um, the changes here, um, we now need to notify the board within thirty days after choosing or designating a, an athletic team coach. And we need to notify you within thirty days that they need all of the regulations and codes to be a coach, which includes being CPR trained. And so we will be bringing that to you in September, um, based on the coaches that will be chosen for the CAFRA. And we have not posted yet for intramural um, coaches for elementary. We still plan on doing that, but that's going to be new, that if teachers want to apply for that to be a coach, they're going to have to go through and be CPR trained as well. And not only do we have to report to the board, we have to report by April first and certify to the State Board of Education that we have required, we have met these requirements for our coaches. So it's, it's a pretty big change.
So will will they be offered, so anybody who's interested in being a coach or does the district going to offer CPR for state class?
Yes, and we will pay for it. Yes, but working on that now, most, a lot of them are, are, but, uh, you know, you have to update it every two years too. So if you want to stay a coach, you've got to keep it updated.
So the, the next two items are the board policy and the administrative regulations on absolute and exclusives. So in terms of, uh, in terms of the board policy, this is being updated to clarify that absence from school is required to be excused when absence is due to work in the entertainment or allied industry as permitted by law. And the policy is being updated to add the requirement that the teachers are to provide identical or equivalent assignments and tests when a student has an, has an excused absence, that's for the board policy. For the regulations, um, there's new law around student absences can be excused up to five days when attending a funeral service or grieving the death of a member of the student's immediate family. There's new law that's incorporated that excuse, uh, a student's absence can be excused up to three days to access services from a victim services organization, grief support, safety planning, or relocation. There's new law that's incorporated that attendance at a religious retreat may be excused for no more than one day. And um, the regulations have also been updated to generalize the means of communication from parents and guardians to verify the absences.
So is the entertainment industry, like if a child is a movie star, is that kind of?
Yes, or um, kind of working in commercials and stuff like that, yeah. So the, the next item is parent and guardian notifications. These are board policies. These, this, this board policy has been updated to clarify importance of effective communication and signature from a parent acknowledging receipt is not required, that's the main. The next item is uh, board policy around guidance and counseling services. This policy is um, being updated to um, address um, qualified mental health professionals that are, are able to work and provide child welfare and attendance type services. There's new ed code that permits people personnel credential holders, so like school psychologists, counselors, social workers, that they can receive authorization to provide these services by completing a um, a CTC approved program or a CTC approved program of professional preparation offered by the school district. Um, in addition, the policy is being updated to indicate that districts receiving ESSA funds, these are federal funds, are required to provide military recruiters with the same access to students as is provided to colleges and prospective employers. And the last policy is summer learning programs. This policy is updated to reflect the district is required to offer expanded learning programs for at least thirty non-instructional days. A priority for these uh, intersection, intercession programs will be given to foster unique bondlessness. And then if an uh, expanded learning program is not offered at this, at the home school, then transportation is provided.
And we have an updated board policy and AR for general obligation bonds. Um, for the board policy, it's updated to include the board may direct the superintendent to explore the possibility of a bond measure. And then the AR is related to the process, um, related to the ballot materials. Um, the ballot question can exceed seventy-five words. Um, also new law which requires you to include the value, the rate, the tax rate for a bond, which is um, three cents um, to a hundred thousand assessed value. And that's something that I've been sharing, that's in our bond language or ballot language, and it's something that I've been sharing also. also when we go talk to parents at the back to school nights. The average assessed value for a home involved is three hundred thousand. And what that equates to that tax rate is approximately ninety-one dollars per year of, of a property tax if this, if a bond would happen, were to pass. We've been sharing that, but it also, it will be on the ballot language as well.
Thank you for that. Um, last was public comments for topics. Um, is there any other public comment?
No, no, no.
Okay. Uh, pending agenda items, uh, I just kinda make a little note here about the items that Nette spoke about, the policy issues.
Yes, we'll make sure that that, we'll make sure it's in there.
If there, are you taking pretty impressive stuff for anybody else?
Other than the cell phone uh, survey and developing that.
Great. I think that's it there. Uh, John.